Can we have roll call, please? And our city manager.
City manager keeps meeting people out there. He's being social.
Councilmember O'Neal. Councilmember Irvin.
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Present.
Mayor Protam Nyheart.
Present.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And the salute to the flag will be led by Councilmember DeGruy.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have a closed session report.
No reportable action.
Okay. That leads us to the consent calendar. Any comments or motions from council?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that item seven be removed. There's a typo in there that, not terribly significant, but we'd like to clear the record up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeGruy.
I just want to have a correction for the minutes. Let me do it now. Okay, it's page 13 where it's under three dash zero. After the third sentence, would prefer not to have, if it could be clarified to say, prefer not to have the item pulled, preferred not to have to have, I'm sorry, not to have to have the item pulled. Does that make sense, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that if people aren't noticing that in this consent calendar, we have a number of our childcare contracts and grant monies, and it's part of what PBNR does so efficiently. And so I just wanted to commend them for continuing to do that and to work with our school district.
Would anyone like to propose any action?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was going to do that. I move approval of the consent calendar minus item seven and as corrected.
Thank you. Councilmember Irvin?
I second.
All right, please vote. Oh. That passes five to zero eventually. Thank you. And we'll hear item number seven after item number nine in the consideration portion. And that leaves us to, or leads us to council communications. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just had a few things to talk about. One that I wanted to discuss was the beautification advisory committee, who is doing amazing work as, as you probably have already seen at Grace McCarthy. They're taking on the Sharp Park off-ramp at the golf course with, it's the first project with Caltrans kind of approval and sort of tacit involvement. So we're hopeful that that goes very well and we can do more. Lindemar is being, the boulevard at the front is being discussed as a next project after that, and potentially, I'm hearing about the water district being involved in that, but there's other options as well. And I wanted to make sure people remember that there are more project sites that are available for beautification through the committee. And I wanted to make a request to the council on this one, and it's, you can just keep track of it in the minutes and maybe we'll get to it. But they asked that we agendize a letter to Caltrans that they would like to write about Highway One, mainly because it's our, our main street in town and that we've been working with Caltrans, and sometimes the relationship has been difficult, and it started to work well. But we'd also like to ask that we get some repairs done, like on the fence, and move the adoption process forward a little bit more for Highway One, adopting the highway. So it'll be nicely worded, but they wanted the council's permission for that, and so we'll be bringing that to you. I wanted to also tell you, C.CAG meets Thursday night, and if you haven't looked at the minutes, which many people don't, but the agenda for this time, we have the draft 2013 congested management plan for San Mateo County is involved in that. And there's also a call that has been made for some of the subcommittees. So I wanted to make sure that other council members, I had talked to, shared that with Councilmember Irvin, I would share that with council, any of the other council members who want to be on some of the subcommittees, like legislative, legislative committee, et cetera. A great organization, you know, it's a great working together example. I also wanted to thank everybody that went to Council of Cities. And I particularly publicly want to thank Mike O'Neal for getting me home. We were at the Folger Stables for that meeting, and apparently I'm allergic to horses, so by the time I was done, I couldn't see. And given that I raised quarter horses and showed courses for years, I guess I've been away from them too long. But that also brings me to, there's a comment period open on the dog management plan for GGNRA. I'm hoping that's one of the first things that the Open Space Parklands Committee takes up, but I encourage the public to look at that. And it's on the website for GGNRA. We also have it. And then last but not least, we have economic development tomorrow night, and I think the time period has been extended, is that correct? For applications to next Friday?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a soft deadline, we can go another week if need be, but...
All right. We're looking for more people to be involved in economic development and also in emergency preparedness. And I have my first solo A-bag meeting on the executive board meeting on the 19th.
All right. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Irvin?
I attended last week a Pacifica School Volunteers meeting, and it was, it's really great to see some of the work that they're doing with very limited funds. They had their Think Bridge camp this past summer, which was very, very successful, and they had the Lego robotics, and the kids were as young as five, and they really ranged an age from five to 10. And it just was a great program, and lots of really happy kids that learned a lot during the summer. They have a lot of things coming up, including the Family Fun Day at the Fog Fest that I encourage everybody with children to stop by and experience that with their kids, as well as the Read Aloud Days is also coming up, and the senior exhibition is going to be in March, I think it's March 21st. And, you know, they really discuss the fact that they're always in need of volunteers for the schools and for some of these events, and I encourage anybody that's interested in participating in the schools or just had a little extra time to go inquire with the school volunteers, it's just an incredible organization. I also went to a city library foundation meeting where we primarily talked about the Beach Boulevard project and how we're moving forward with that project and, and other issues with the library. So that was very informative as well. That's it.
Councilmember DeGruy.
The airport noise commission met, and we are talking about requesting or investigating how we can be, have more teeth in noise management. There's a feeling that we really don't have as much strength as we would, would like to have, so we're investigating that. The, regarding the, with the writing of letters for Caltrans, I was surprised to hear at the AAUW meeting that there's only four Caltrans folks on the coast. I think maybe we, because I always wonder how the state cannot understand that we're an asset, economical asset being the coast. So I think, looking at how Highway One is here in our city, maybe we should write a letter to our assembly persons and our senators to see if they can't lobby a little bit for that. So if they only have four workers, you start to understand why things are the way they are, but it goes through our city. The, the districting meetings, there are districting meetings, like we used to be in District Five, which I did not realize until Supervisor Horsey spoke at the Democrats meeting. And that would have had us with Daly City. We are presently with District Three, which we are with Half Moon Bay and the unincorporated areas. And now there's a talk of, of changing districts, but you can actually be very much involved and for very techie people, if you go to the San Mateo County off, excuse me, website, you can actually get very creative, kind of beyond my capabilities. For those of us who like to meet with other people, real life, there's a meeting tomorrow night at Daly City, it's at the War Memorial Building. All of this is on their website. And there's one in Half Moon Bay at Cunha Intermediate School on Wednesday at 6:30. Both of them start at 6:30. So I really encourage us to pay attention to that. We had the Scouts meet, and I missed one of the meetings, I had mentioned it once before, but all the council wasn't here. Really would like council to consider having an annual Scouts honoring the Eagle Scouts. I don't know what month in the year would be appropriate for that, but like right now, I thought maybe they could come, but they're off to college. So finding the appropriate month with the Scouts that would fit for when they determine who those folks qualify to be Eagle Scouts, they certainly do a lot in our city, and that's our youth, we want to support them, so I would like us to look at that, please. And where's the other thing? I think I covered it all. Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Hi, I just wanted to mention I did, Karen and I were both there at the Equalization Basin meeting, the citizens meeting, to get their feedback on the equalization basin. I actually gave my infrastructure speech to two groups in the past month, the Pacifica Democrats and the Environmental Family. I attended, and actually Sue was also there, an Eagle Court of Honor for Troop 256 out of St. Peters. And I would also like to invite anybody that would like to, the Boys and Girls Club is having a ribbon cutting for their technology center that was just donated by Rent a Center, and they're having a ribbon cutting on September 20th at 5:00. And so council, school board, it kind of fits into the STEM thrust of San Mateo County education. So I just wanted to pass that on.
So I just want to thank everyone for covering for me while I was gone, out, out of the country on, to a friend's wedding. But a couple of things here, Councilmember DeGruy mentioned the redistricting, that's redistricting advisory committee that's in full swing. And so I just wanted to mention to the council that, I've asked to put that on the agenda for next council meeting, so that we can comment. A lot of cities are commenting, a lot of council members are commenting. In fact, Daly City is on their agenda this evening. There is a, an item to endorse a certain map, and if you go online, it's called the Unity Map, or I think it might be Community Unity Map. So you can see what that looks like. And, and that actually would take the north end of Pacifica, basically at Manor, Manor Drive. So if you imagine Manor Drive going all the way to the ocean and all the way up to Skyline, and the top end of, or north end of Pacifica would, would be going into their district. So I've had a couple of calls, we've talked to a couple of people, including Fairmont Homeowners Association and others, trying to get their input and making sure that we comment. So that will be on the agenda for next week. So I encourage the council to, to look thoroughly at that, so we can comment, give an educated comment, because I think it's going to be important that we do, and make sure that we solidify our representation in the county. And second here, I met with the Tri-County Apartment Association Government Affairs rep, and I thought it was kind of an interesting meeting. One of the things that we talked about was our sewer master plan. And I remember when I ran for city council, when we were doing all the endorsement stuff in 2010, I guess it was, that, one of their big things was the sewer rates. And, you know, sewer rates increasing. And so when we came out with our plan and proposed sewer rate increase, they really looked at that heavily. And I just want to report back to the council that I was very encouraged to hear that they had looked at it, they looked at our plan, and they thought it was a very responsible and thorough plan. And, and so they didn't, you know, take any action or come to us lobbying for anything. So I thought that was very good feedback. And I saw Josh Cosgrove here from our wastewater department, and I thought that was something good to share, knowing that they represent apartment owners in this field, and they really looked at it thoroughly and gave it a approval I thought was, was very telling. So thank you to everyone involved for that. And that's my last comment, but I do see a couple more lights here. Double dipping.
Yeah, well, you made, you reminded me, I just wanted to say my apologies. I was going to cover for you at the last meeting, and unfortunately, one of my dearest, longtime, 40-year friends, you know, there were six of us that were really close in college kind of thing, went in for a hernia operation and ended up critically ill and passed away, and it was very sudden and shook all of us very much. So we all came from all across the country to be there, and I got there in the morning and got to see him before, so I'm really glad that I went, and thank you, and I apologize, because I usually don't just suddenly leave like that, but I did talk to our city manager, and I knew you were in good hands.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I also forgot something when you mentioned North County, is I went down for the LAFCO orientation for my position, and she informed me that later this year or early next year, they are going to be doing a study about consolidation of special districts in North County. So I just thought that was like coming attraction, light in the tunnel, you know? So anyhow, I just wanted to make note of that.
Great. And then just one last comment from me. Horace Henshaw asked me to make a comment this evening, and I forgot my paper that, the email that he gave me. So if, Horace, you're watching, I apologize, I'll make the announcement next week, it's not timely, though. All right, and that wraps that up.
Oh, I do, I do have one more thing. Can I? I do have one more thing.
I'm feeling in a good mood today, or else everyone usually gets one term.
There's an award out there, and it's the Cox Conserves Award for Lynn Adams of the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and if you go online and you vote for her, she has the opportunity to win $10,000 for her nonprofit, which is the Pacifica Beach Coalition, which would be a wonderful thing to be able to do. So encourage you to go out and vote for Lynn Adams for that.
Great. All right, that brings us to oral communications from the public. Put a couple cards, first Cindy Abbott, and then Noel Blinco and Ed Gear.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and community. I'm Cindy Abbott, and tonight I'm representing the Advisory Board of the Pacifica Resource Center. And I'm pleased to be telling you about special events that we have coming up here in the month of October. And the first is on Sunday, October 6th, when we'll be celebrating the Third Annual Rockaway Beach Stroll. And the stroll's really one of my favorite events here in town, because it showcases all that's wonderful about Pacifica. It's in beautiful Rockaway Beach, it's so gorgeous there, and you get to enjoy looking at the ocean while you're strolling around our unique local shops and taking part in locally-produced foods. And best of all, it's supporting our local community members. People are coming together as a community to support our neighbors. So we welcome the council and the public to attend the Rockaway Beach Stroll on Sunday, October 6th. It begins at 2:00 PM and runs until six o'clock, until 5:00. And strolling takes place from 2:00 to 4:00, when there's also live silent auctions. And then from 4:00 to 5:00 is a live auction that's held at the lower level of the Moonraker. So hope to see you there on Sunday, October 6th. This is also the time of the year when we start ramping up for the holidays. And on October 1st, we'll start signing up families for the adoptive family, and the deadline to sign up for the adoptive family for the holiday is November 15th. And then we're also, once again, supporting families here in town with support for Thanksgiving. And sign up, it will take place through October 31st. So if you know of anybody, or if you're a community member in need, please go to the Resource Center and sign up for those events. The, both the adoptive family and the Thanksgiving support starts for, on signups on October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel, and, and Mr. Gear?
Edwin Gear.
And we are part of the Pacifica Shorebird Alliance, and thank you, city, I want to thank the city council for supporting the snowy plover. They voted last, January, I believe it was, to support the snowy plover protection. And since then, we've been active at trying to get some grant money, and we have been successful. And through the National Autobahn Society, we have realized a grant for $10,000, which will go as good waves for helping us with the snowy plover protection. And one of the keys on, with, with this grant is how we might divide it up. And with the $10,000, what we primarily have in mind, two-thirds of that $10,000, we will put towards the fencing, the symbolic fencing that would be west of the Dunes. You know, it is just some poles sticking in the ground, but it turns out, by the time you get the nuts and bolts to put things together, to be able to take it down when you need to take it down, ends up costing some money. But in addition to putting two-thirds of the grant money into the fencing, we also feel extremely important is putting one-third of the money into, for educational material and funding. And our group, Pacifica Shorebird Alliance, have been working closely with the children in Pacifica. And they are a real resource at creating signs, and some of the money we will be using will be put into signage and things like that. So one of the things to move forward is the Coastal Commission. And a key item is for Pacifica to connect up with the Coastal Commission for the permit. Now, once you have the permit, that doesn't mean everything's going to be approved, but we can go ahead with the symbolic fencing. So I want to, Ed wanted to read something.
I don't know if I can get it, it's short, but I'll read it. We want to, whereas the Pacific Shorebird Alliance wish to present the city council of Pacifica with our most profound thanks this Monday, 9th day of September in the year 2013, for your passing of votes needed for the protections of the threatened western snowy plover at the Pacifica State Beach Lindemar. And it's, thank you, and it's signed by our president.
Thank you.
I also have my name up on another section.
Yeah, we got you for the next one, Noel. Thank you. Teresa Dyer?
Good evening, Teresa Dyer, 1408 Crespi Drive. First, I'd like to wish Mr. Garvey well. I didn't get to know him that well, but I know a lot of his counterparts. And I'd like to welcome Lori Tinfo, if she's going to be selected tonight. In the 51 years that I lived in Pacifica, we've never had a woman manager. Not that I have anything against the men, but, you know, this will be a milestone. And I'd just like to mention that, and I brought this up before, that we don't have weed abatement anymore. So, and we don't have a code enforcer anymore. So the responsibility lies with the planning department. And so I've been complaining, you know, and I'm only one of 39,000 people, so I wish somebody else had complained, because I think they're tired of seeing me. Well, anyway, I accomplished the weeds that were cut by Maury's, Mooney's Garden. And then I also got rid of the dead pine tree at the St. Charles Library right at the entrance. And since Lori comes from Walnut Creek, and we've all been reading about the fires that were there in Contra Costa, I think we ought to really look into the fire hazards in Pacifica. And I don't want to call it a petrified forest, but that's what it is, with the dead trees on the highway, and when newcomers come into this town, it's a real eyesore. And it's on private property, so you need to make a phone call to that person. If they don't take care of it, then our tree service will do it, and we'll just bill them. And there's another one on Larita and Spruce, which is very detrimental to the house above. If that ever went up in fire, the house would too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Todd Slessinger?
Yeah, good evening, Todd Slessinger, Lindemar. First of all, this is kind of an inside joke, but a big shout out to Noel Blinco. I was down at the quarry the other day, Noel, and I did see the Loch Ness Monster. Most of you don't know that one. Should pay better attention. Number two, digging a big pit and filling it up with sewage, and I went to the quote-unquote charrette on that, did anybody go to that? That was sort of a charade, because I asked the question, who's going to pay for it? Correct me if I'm wrong, they were looking at 12 to 17 million to dig a big hole. That's double work, people. You're going to be the new city manager? I hope. Listen up, because this is what it's really all about. That, my friends, is double work. You can do one mile, according to what I've been told, of main sewer line for a million dollars. So do 17 miles. Don't dig a big hole, you're still going to have to do the 17 miles. Use your heads, people. That's like buying insurance on a refrigerator or a computer. Any consumer advocate will tell you it's bad business. And had you listened to me many years ago, you would have filed for bankruptcy, because you wouldn't be in this position. You could have stayed the penalties with the settlement and the consent, and you could have beat up on, and I hate to use that word, but sometimes you've got to beat up on people. You could have beat up on the unions and beat up on the city employees, and we'd be fine. But nobody wanted to do it, because you guys are smarter than me. But it seems like after 20 years, that you're not smarter than me. Now, you inherited some of this mess, but if you think that it's smart to dig a hole as a stopgap, no. Remember, when the spill occurred in 2008, one of the sequential batters was out. Okay? So, don't do it. Furthermore, when I asked the guy who was handling the charrette where the money was coming from, he said, oh, well, that's not our business. Well, if it's coming out of the taxpayer pocket, it ain't happening over my dead body. That's stupid business, people. Come on, I'm a businessperson successful for over 35 years. That's longer than you've been on the face of the earth, Len. Well, it is. So listen to me, it's a bad deal, Mary Ann. It's a bad deal. It's a waste of time and money. Sometimes you've got to take chances. Nobody can get money, you know, blood from a turnip. So if it happens again, they can't get any money out of us, we're broke. Think about it, people, it's bad business.
That's the last card I have. Anyone, anyone else wish to speak? Okay, see no one? Bring that to, or bring it to item number eight. So consideration and adoption of a resolution appointing Lori Tinfo a city manager and approving the employment contract between the City of Pacifica and Ms. Tinfo.
Yes, good evening. The council did go through a formal and lengthy recruitment process.
I think you're on.
There you go.
Is it on?
Yes.
Sorry. The council has gone through a formal and quite thorough recruitment process to find a city manager to replace the former city manager, Steve Rhodes, who retired back in After that process, the council has chosen one candidate that is before you tonight for approval and selection, and that candidate is Ms. Lori Tinfo. Ms. Tinfo is currently the Assistant City Manager for the City of Walnut Creek. She has experience in a wide area of public agency interests, such as labor negotiations, human resources, economic development, budgeting, and, as well as finance, and information technology. Specifically, Ms. Tinfo has been involved in the construction of two new libraries, both in Walnut Creek and Saratoga. They both came in under budget and on time. She's also been involved in priority-based budgeting. She led the effort there in the City of Walnut Creek to introduce that to the city, which has been quite successful. She's also done a lot of community networking with tools, like incentivizing block parties and other activities to try and get participation and communication with the community. She's also been involved in economic development, working with chambers, as well as interested parties to develop... parties to develop and retain existing business. Ms. Tinfo graduated from Stanford University with a Bachelor's of Science in Applied Earth Science. She then got her Master's Degree from Harvard University in City and Regional Planning. She is scheduled to begin employment if the council approves the resolution in her employment agreement on October 21st. With regard to fiscal impact, her annual base salary is in fact lower than the base salary of the prior city manager. So, the recommendation here is for the council to adopt the resolution which would approve the employment agreement with Ms. Lori Tinfo and appointing her as the City of Pacifica's next city manager. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council for staff? No? No? Okay, seeing none. We have one card.
What, we're going to have Lori talk?
Oh, do we want, oh, Ms. Tinfo, we'd add to speak before we have public comments. Excuse me, Todd. We'll do it after. Pardon me.
Hi.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lori Tinfo, and I am very pleased to be standing here before all of you tonight. I'm very excited about this opportunity and feel like my skills and experience that the city attorney has outlined for you a few minutes ago are really a great fit for the challenges and the, to realize the potential that is in Pacifica. I want to note that through this process, I've learned a lot about Pacifica that I didn't know before, that I've had a lot of fun sharing with other people on the other side of the hill, about the wonderful fishing pier, the, all the hiking trails, the, really the excitement that exists here in Pacifica that I think is sort of a secret to a lot of people. So I'm looking forward to coming here, becoming part of the community, and experiencing all those wonderful secrets myself. The, I am, as I mentioned, I'm eager to come here and work with the city council and with the city staff and with the community to take on the challenges that I know exist, but that I think is just the start of a process that we're going to really make the most of. So again, I'm happy to be here standing before you tonight, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you to take on, take Pacifica to the next level. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else get any comments or anything from council?
Well, I have a lot of comments, but we can hear from the public.
Todd, we have one card. Please direct all your comments to the council, please.
My bark's worse than my bite. Anybody that would want to come to Pacifica and be a city manager has guts. I don't know about brains, but guts. I guess we'll see about that. But from my recollection, the only city manager that I had a lot of communication with was Dave Carney. That's going way back. Sue, you remember Dave Carney? Thank you. Just wanted to see if you were listening. So, you bid off a lot if you're going to be the city manager in Pacifica. So, let's hope that you're hitting it at the right time. Because one thing I've noticed, and I'm very observant, I don't miss much, do I? I saw some construction down in Rockaway. Oh, Mary Ann, I saw it! Mary Ann, I saw it! And there's quite a full parking lot. Where's my check? Because I've been harping on that for 10 years. I don't get a cut of the action, my commission, for all that hard work I did? Oh, well, it's okay. My contribution to Pacifica. And you know what else I noticed? There's more traffic, particularly on the weekends, huh, Sue?
Could be.
Yeah. I'm seeing it. I don't miss much. People are coming through town. And it's too bad, Sue, and I'm not singling you out, but you've been on the council longer than anyone. It's too bad we didn't line up our ducks sooner. Could have captured some of that money coming through town. But it's still kind of leaking out of here. But, the traffic's way up. The, hi, I see you staring at me. Hi, Kathy. The traffic's way up. And the restaurant at the hotel, and there's people staying at the hotel on Cresby? Been there twice. Get a Pisco Sour. Have two. So let's hope, and all the properties are for sale on Palmetto, so, and you know what a pessimist I am, but I'm also a realist. So I'm seeing some things. So don't drop the ball, city manager. We hard, we worked hard to get to this point. Don't drop the ball. Thank you.
All right, that's our last card. Do we have any other cards back there? Nope? All right, bring it back to council.
Julie?
All right. Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to say that I, we did do an extensive search, and I want to thank Avery for that and our city attorney for staying with us. And I want to thank my fellow council members, because it was an, it was an experience spending those Saturdays together, going through interviews and things. But, um, but I am absolutely thrilled with our selection. I can't say enough about somebody who has been articulate, enthusiastic, absolutely one of the most engaging people. I was riveted every time she was talking. I think, I want to remind, well, you could say whatever, Sue, but writing, everything that you did, it was outstanding, and I am so thrilled. I would love to make a motion.
Anyone want to comment for, council member Irvin?
I just would like to kind of ditto some of what Mayor Protem and I heard just said, but it's just amazing. It really feels like an incredibly great match, you know, just the expertise that you have and your experience and your education and your public relations work and your leadership skills all just, you know, really invigorated us as a council. And we just are really excited about the change, and we know that you're going to be moving us forward, and we're really looking forward to it. So thank you. And I think also just, we've had the interim city manager, Mike Garvey, who's done an amazing job as well, and I think it will be a really great overlap, you know, just that we can ease into this nicely. Thank you.
Council member agree?
All right, I'd say ditto to all of that. I think some of the things that stand out for me is also the experience and eagerness to involve the entire community. That's very important. And we did our hard work, yes we did, but I also like the fact that Lori did her hard work and really got to know, so that I feel comfortable that she knows our city, she knows our challenges, and she knows our differences of opinions, and yet she's willing to step forward with confidence and hope. And so that's, that's very exciting. And again, we have Mr. Garvey, who's done wonderful, and I tap his brain all the time about all his experience, so I think the handoff there will be, will be very good. So, and yes, the writing was, was, it was what you might say was supposed to be dry stuff. I actually sat down and relaxed and read the whole thing.
And one and more.
I would just like to welcome her aboard the ship Pacifica.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I think Ms. Tinfo really put it well when she said that her attributes and our challenges here are kind of a good fit. When you look at, it's a big goal for the council to achieve economic development, better communication with the public, communicating our finances, and, and of course, our libraries that we're trying to revamp, and so, all of which she has experience in. So I think, and just her competency level will be great. And in coming on, we want to lower expectations for you, right, to make it easy. So, it's going to be, definitely it's always a long-term project, and one thing at a time, I think we'll continue to make progress, and I think certainly she's the one to lead us in that direction. So, Mayor Protem, would you like to make a motion?
I am so honored to make this motion, because this is the motion for our very, very first woman as a city manager. And I would request that we appoint Lori Tinfo as city manager and approve employment agreement between the City of Pacifica and Lori Tinfo.
Does member agree?
I'll be happy to second that.
Okay, please vote.
We're adopting the resolution, just for clarity.
You, did I miss something?
That you're actually adopting the resolution.
Oh, we're adopting the resolution. Okay, we'll throw that in.
Second.
Please vote.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button.
All right, can you re-set those, so we don't give anyone a heart attack? It's called a sense of humor check.
Just kidding.
Are you ready, Kathy?
I'm ready.
All right, please vote, everyone.
At this time tonight?
All right, and that passes five to zero. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right, that brings us to item number nine, appointment of the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. Do we have a staff report?
Honorable mayor, council members, the city has recruited for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. This was advertised in the Pacifica Tribune on June 19th, 26th, and July 3rd. The city clerk received a total of 12 applications, and interviews were conducted by the city council on July 23rd. Staff recommends making appointments at this time.
Okay. How many votes do we get?
It's nine members.
Nine, okay. Sorry. Okay, so, does everyone have a sheet?
Sheet, yes.
Have one? Okay. You have one? Okay, so just please vote for nine, and we'll give them over to the city clerk, and then we'll see what happens.
We don't do.
Did anybody want to say anything?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, we have public comment. I'm so sorry. It's been a month and a half, I totally forgot how to do this, this whole thing, so, excuse me. I know.
I know.
We have one card, Noel Blinco. Excuse me, sir. Pardon me.
Noel Blinco, city council. When you did your interview for the Open Space and Park Committee, I was on a vacation out of town, out of Pacifica, but I, reasserting, I did put an application in, and I'm still have a high interest in being involved in the committee. I have had a number of years' experience on environmental committees, and on the past GGNRA committee, I had an opportunity of working with the park people. For example, Steve Griswold, who was ahead of the trail. So, I was quite active on the GGNRA subcommittee we had at the time. But anyway, I would like you to consider myself for the Open Space and Park Committee. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Noel. We have one more card?
It looks like there's a card back there.
All right, we have.
It looks like there's one.
One more coming. Take your time.
Hi, thank you very much. My name's Julie Lancel, and I also applied to be on the Open Space Committee as well. And I did speak at the last meeting also, just to reaffirm my interest in it, and also to let you know that I had missed that interview day also, because I was on a planned vacation. I didn't, I haven't lobbied any of you to be on it or anything like that. I'm still very much interested, and I'm totally willing to answer any questions if you may have them of me at this time.
Okay.
Okay. I was on the original Open Space Committee, so I've had some experience, and I'll leave it at that. And hear you. Oh, I was on the original Open Space Committee, and I'll leave it at that. So, thank you. I've had some experience.
Thank you. That's our last card, so I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. Any comments before we vote? Council member, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to say thank you for such a great array of applicants that represented both the old GGNRA Advisory Committee as well as the Open Space Committee. And I, I appreciate the difficulties in combining, but I also feel like it's going to be a really exciting committee. We had a lot of great people. And I know that only nine can get chosen out of the 12, but everybody was a winner as far as I'm concerned. So, thank you for all who applied.
Council member agree?
And I believe there'll be subcommittees like there were in the other ones, so, subcommittees are extremely important.
So, yes, so if, if you don't make it on, please participate in, in that way if you feel so fit. So, I'm going to pass these down, give them over to Kathy, and then we'll take a little And these tally sheets are all public, they'll be in the minutes.
We can't, we're going to have to take them to Kathy.
Break the other way. Yeah, maybe like a three, five-minute break.
That's as bad as my notes.
We should have interim music or something.
Like music when you're on hold, or? Yeah.
Mike, that's, that's good. We don't want our new city manager to think.
Yeah, she did. We haven't signed it.
Doesn't look like it's the slam dunk the planning commission was.
I will say while they're doing this, Mike, you are, I can't believe the wealth of people you know. Every time I mention something in the county, you've been to dinner with them, or done something with them, or served with them.
Agreed with them.
Your, your resources are amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
We should have taken a break. I think it takes too long to count nine. We should have kept the pressure off of Kathy.
Okay, so, the applicants with the highest numbers of votes are Noel Blinco, Lisa Villasenor, Jim Cordiero, Alan Federman, George Frank, Paul Jones, Julie Lancel, Michael Piccelli, Allison Sanders. That should be nine. Allison Sanders.
So you got nine, there's no need to do another.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay.
Correct.
Cool. All right, well, that's settled. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Cool.
I think you're doing it so quickly. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we want a formal motion to appoint those nine people.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion?
I move to appoint the nine people that we just voted on.
Councilmember DeGruy?
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. And that's our last item.
No, you have another item that you put.
Oh, number seven! Gosh!
You, we're gonna.
I know.
Not let you take a break again.
The rust is still on, thoroughly on there. So this is wastewater force main conditional assessment project, RFP. It's your city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to give credit to Councilmember Digra for finding this problem and bringing it to my attention, and then I researched it. Under the, the request for proposals for the wastewater force main condition assessment project, if you chance to look on page 57 of the consent calendar, which is also page 10 of the RFP, you'll see under the fourth bullet point a reference to their doing some work in the proximity of a high elevation location on State Highway 56. And as that is Carmel Valley, we thought it inappropriate to spend our money on it. Following up, it turns out the correct number is one, at State Highway 1. And I did also verify that this was not lifted from another document. It wasn't a cut and paste. This was an original document with our wastewater treatment staff, and they just felt it was a typo. They didn't know how it got in there, but they were grateful it was found. That is the only change that we would ask that you make, and we do recommend approval by council.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion?
Well, you have to go to the public. Any questions from council for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the public. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to council. Councilmember DeGruy?
I'll make a recommendation that we make those corrections as stated.
Prove the motion as corrected. I'll second that.
Is that good enough? All right. Councilmember O'Neill, do you second? Okay, let's vote. That passes 5 to 0, and that is our last item of the day. Thank you, have a good evening.